Okay, good evening. I'd like to call to order the regular governing board meeting of the Jefferson Elementary School District, October 12, 2016 at 7:04 PM. Sorry about that. And before we go any further, I wanted to report out from our closed session, from our board meeting on the 28th of September, that the board completed the superintendent's evaluation with a more than satisfactory rating. Okay, could we have members present, please?
Shaquille Ali.
Here.
Manufo Leah Inga Anawai.
Here.
Marie Brizuela.
Here.
Clayton Koo.
Here.
Rebecca Douglas.
Here. And we don't have a school here to do our pledge. Ms. McCullic, could you lead us in looking?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We could take a moment to review our board meeting guidelines. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'm glad we approved the agenda.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. And that brings us to section six, our special presentations. We have our school-wide attendance recognition awards. Representatives from School Innovation and Achievement will be here, I hope, to present attendance recognition awards to representatives from Ben Franklin, George Washington, TR Policita, and Westlake Schools for their achievements in the 2016-15-16 school year.
So I have a couple of points I'd like to make here. So as you know, we are in partnership with School Innovations and Achievement to support our efforts in improving attendance. And we're seeing another year of exciting news for our district. We have our representatives and our partners from School Innovations and Achievement to share a special presentation of awards of our top performers at attendance. And we work really hard with them to identify categories of awards that demonstrate improvement and growth and not just excellence in attendance. So we're thrilled to be presenting awards to a number of our schools for their efforts at creating this culture of showing up, which we're working hard to instill throughout the district. And not only have, do they have improved attendance at their site, they also have a goal, they also have hit a goal, and we always, that we always intend to hit, which is increasing parent-site, student engagement, and partnership. So I'd like to present to you Susan Stadi, who will be presenting the awards.
Hi, I'm Susan. Thank you Superintendent Fidalis, Board and Client Cabinet, sorry, Cabinet members, and school sites for having us here to present these awards tonight. We are here to honor the sites and their leadership for what they have been able to accomplish during the 2015-16 school year as it relates to attendance and creating a culture of showing up. The districts, these sites, and everyone's efforts have collectively increased parental involvement, student-parent engagement, and employee commitment. These districts, as a whole, have seen reduced rates in all types of absences, excused, unexcused, and chronic. The Attention to Attendance Team has been fortunate to be involved in supporting these sites in their efforts, and we have experienced firsthand their dedication and passion. We've looked at the data over the past year, and the results we found were exceptional. So each of the sites tonight that we would like to recognize for you are your district's top performers in reducing their rates in categories like truancy, excessive excused absence, and chronic absenteeism. So, without further ado, the, whoops. Okay, the first school that I would like to recognize, and if they perhaps would like to come up, is Benjamin Franklin Intermediate. They reduced truancy by almost 25 percent, reduced excessive excused by almost 14 percent, and reduced chronic absenteeism by 19 percent. So congratulations. The next one is George Washington. They reduced truancy by 5 percent, reduced excessive excused by almost 37 percent, and reduced chronic absenteeism by almost 38 percent. The next is Thomas R. Policita Middle. While they walk up, they reduced truancy by 57 percent. Very impressive. Reduced chronic absenteeism by almost 25 percent. Congratulations to everyone. And lastly, but not least, Westlake Elementary. Reduced truancy by 24 percent, reduced excessive excused by almost 22 percent, and reduced chronic absenteeism by 23 percent. All right. Thank you so much. Congratulations to everyone, and we're looking forward to another great year with you guys.
And Ms. Stadi, if you wouldn't mind reminding us what the different definitions are for those categories.
Oh.
I think I know them, but I know Ms. McCullic certainly does, but...
Truancy, three or more unexcused.
Okay.
Excessive excused for districts is typically around five to seven, I forget exact numbers that you set them at, but usually excessive is around that mark, and then chronic if they've missed more than 10 percent of the school year.
Okay, so that would be like 18 days for us.
Exactly, right.
Yeah, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody want to say anything?
Good work.
Exactly, yeah. And I was just thinking that part of what I was, I was realizing, when we're reducing those chronic excused, or excessive excused absences, and maybe it's the chronic absenteeism as well, that really reflects that we are communicating to the parents, especially when it's at the grade school level, you're really communicating to the parents that it is really important for a kindergartner to be in class, for a third grader to be in class, because sometimes it's really about reminding the parents that, yeah, you need to get the kids there. So congratulations for some great communication on that, too.
Well, congratulations to everybody for working hard and reaching goals that make it better for everybody.
All right, well, let's give the, did you want to say?
I just wanted to say that when we speak to achievement gaps, we, it's, the biggest thing is just getting there. So to hear the percentages is really impressive, especially hitting 57 percent. I mean, I knew that, when she started the first award with Ben Franklin, hearing 25 percent in 14 and 19, and then seeing it go up to 57, I mean, it just gives us a lot of hope, because getting them to come to the classroom and hearing of the consistent messaging that is happening from the school to the home and then coming, making full circle, these are the results of that. So thank you all for your hard work and well-deserved recognition. Thank you.
I want to say congratulations to all the schools as well, and I want to see next year that we have every school here, because I feel like it shouldn't just be some of our schools, it should be every school.
Okay, well, let's, let's give a round of applause to all the schools and school attendants, and to all the parents who got the kids there, and the kids should show up. All right. And we have another special presentation recognition tonight, our employee retirements and resignation resolutions for long-term district employees who retired or resigned between June, when we had our big district-wide recognition day, and September. And we have the resolutions for their years of service. I don't think any of them are here, but, so we had retirements in classified, William Fields, a custodian, too, from Thomas Edison, and Richard Young, our Director of Maintenance and Operations and Bond Manager, from, oh, that's me. Retirements, certificated retirements from Kathleen Hagerhorst, second-grade teacher from Westlake, and Dorothy Louis, second-grade teacher from Garden Village, and resignations in the certificated, Erica Fisher, fifth-grade teacher from JFK, and Nicholas Manfred, fourth-grade teacher from Thomas Edison. And I think they are all off, engaged in the next phase of life. It's so hard to get retirees to come back to work, but we will send the beautiful resolutions, commending them, out to them in the mail, so they will get their resolutions. And congratulations to those who, and many thanks to those who served our school district for so many years. Section seven, communications. Persons wishing to address the board, do we have a speaker? Of course. Let me guess. Who could it be? Ms. Melinda Dart. I almost said it before I saw the page, but I knew if I did, that would be the one time it was somebody else.
You never know. Hi, I'm Melinda Dart, AFT 3267, and I would like to congratulate the retirees, both classified and certificated, and also congratulations to Ben Franklin, George Washington, TRP, and Westlake for their achievements in improving attendance. That's really amazing. I did want to report out and thank everyone who volunteered, many of the people in this room, for the First Book Event at Woodrow Wilson this last weekend. We had over 100 volunteers on Friday, October 7, and the people from AFT said they had never seen people sort the books so quickly. We did it in four hours, which was amazing. On October 8, we had 800 families come through and get books. So that means that all those children got 10 books, and we had also many teachers who took out 65 books for their classrooms. And we want everyone to know that there are still some books at Woodrow Wilson. They are for middle-school and high-school age students, and if people can get there, they are welcome. Middle-school people are welcome to pick them up. There, I would say there's about 1,000 books left. When you look at 40,000 books, it's really a lot. So 1,000 seems very small in comparison to that. And also, some of those books will be going to Lit Day for our own district, for the older students who come through, and also to the Union Holiday Hardship Fund that gives out gifts to folks in San Mateo. So thank you very much, everyone who volunteered.
That's great. Let's give a round of applause. That was an amazing event. Okay, section B, Administrator Comments. Ms. Kessler, you want to?
Yeah, I just want to remind everybody, see the stickers for people to vote, and you can't vote if you're not registered, and October 24 is the last day to register for this election, which is in November. And I just want to remind anybody who is over the age of 18, or will be 18 on October 24, to please start now. If you know anybody who is not registered and that can, please tell them to register, tell them to vote. And if you're 17, you guys are coming up soon. Even if you have to register on the 25th, you might not make it this election, but you'll make it the next election. So please, and we have forms in the back, although, I don't know, maybe somebody here is, somebody they can bring it to. Thank you.
So last week, we had our first Parent Involvement Advisory Committee meeting. It was a small turnout, so we want to encourage folks to come out to our next one on November, I believe it's 15, but we'll be sending out reminders for that. On Monday, we had an Institute Day, which was a staff professional development day for all staff, classified and certificated, and we tried to make it more personalized learning. It's one of our goals, to build that culture of collaboration within our staff. And then also, just to remind folks that we do have a family night coming up on October 27 at Garden Village. Dinner will be at 6 o'clock, and then it's a family game night until 7:30.
So I want to thank everybody for their hard work. I know getting kids to school, especially in the middle school, and making sure they're there every period is really tough, so those numbers are so great to hear. So thank you very much. I wanted to mention that girls' volleyball has begun. Nick Wolf again is leading the after-school sports program, and I want to thank everybody for getting that going. Boys' volleyball is going to be starting in January, and then we're going to be doing in the spring, track, and then for our first time, we're going to do soccer. So that's coming down the pike.
All right, that's cool. Okay, board member acknowledgements and commendations?
Just reiterating what everyone has already said this evening about the attendance. I'm very pleased that we're still making progress with that, and also, the book giveaway. I wasn't able to attend, but I was happy to see that. I know a few of you made it. So as long as one of us is there, then I'm good. So anyway, keep up the great work, and also just want to acknowledge that Mr. Parrish out there has a golf tournament coming up. I don't know if he's told everyone else in here, but it says that they have awarded over $20,000 in scholarship funds to deserving high-school seniors who are pursuing four-year college degrees. So I want to encourage everyone to support the golf tournament, Saturday, October 22, out at Metropolitan Golf Links, and it starts early, so get up early, 7 o'clock AM. All right, so that's it.
I, too, just want to, again, commend everyone that's working hard to ensure that our students are in the classroom, but it was quite a sight to see the book giveaway on Saturday. That took a lot of hands, and it was just amazing, because I'm always doing the sale after Thanksgiving, because I'm an aunt to many, and I have to say that this was one of those days that I loved seeing kids not grabbing just, you know, going for toys, but for books. And it was just amazing that they were excited to go for books, not in some electronic gadget. And they were so thrilled to be able to see the variety of books that were available to them, and everyone, including myself and my daughter, were walking out and could barely, yeah, get the books to the car, and I was able to take some boxes away, and I actually was able to give kids books over the weekend, and it just, they just lit up, because some of those books are pretty expensive, especially the sets. They're very expensive, so hats off, Melinda, and to the team, to AFT, to First Book, because it's my understanding that they sought you out, so they knew who to come to, to get the job done. 40,000 books is a lot of books, and they knew who to go to. And our district benefited because they knew that you were the go-to person, so thank you for your leadership, you know, because it continues to benefit this community, so we are very, very thankful. I look forward to the next one. Rebecca was working hard out there. I saw her breaking a sweat, so...
You just had to stand up. Not Daly City weather on Saturday.
It was a beautiful day indeed, so thank you to all, and I just want to, again, echo what has been said by Julie, that we need to get out there and encourage others to vote. There are so many initiatives that we need to be mindful of that impact all of our communities, not just here in Daly City, but of course nationwide, but there's just so many issues, like for me, in the Pacific Islander community, we talk about the SOTAC. Those things impact people, like, in my community, and sometimes when we're not having those conversations, people just don't understand the importance of getting to the ballot box. So for me, I don't know if you have people who may need to be, may need to be connected or need a ride, I will tell you, I'm there. I'm there. I pull together a lot of people who are willing to give them a ride, because some people like to get to the ballot box. They don't like to put it in the mail. But if people need to be aware, talk about issues, I also keep my door open. I share my perspective, but I also make sure that they understand the facts of what's on the table and let them make the decision. And the reason why I open myself that way is because it is so important that we know what's going on. It's the only way we can continue to serve our communities better. So I hope that we can all do our due diligence in ensuring that we take at least two people with us to the ballot box. So continue to keep up the great work.
Me? Okay. So some of the things that happened that I attended, I went to the Piac meeting, which was great, even though it wasn't as large as you expected, but it was still people there, and it was engaging, which was really great. Also, I was at the book giveaway. I only saw, I signed up for a few hours, but it was all day and night.
Hard to stop.
It was like, whoa. But just seeing that, all the people running back and forth and putting the books here and there, and it was amazing. But everybody chipped in. The principal was there, working hard, parents were there, teachers, some classified, the custodians working really hard, and then us, you know, we were there. And I think it was, what was nice is that it was not just hard work, it was fun. It was fun. Look, I found this book. And we had a lot of Star Wars, you know, the boys liked Star Wars, all those action heroes, but they were stories that they had to read, and stuff for the girls as well. So it was exciting, I felt, and then I guess, I don't know if I saw you that day.
No, I didn't.
But that's because I had kitchen duty. No, I mean, the PTA furnished breakfast for everybody, so we were in there early in the morning, getting that all ready, and then we couldn't leave, it was just on and on. And then, I think it was the AFT that furnished the lunch. I couldn't believe, like, a thousand dollars worth of food.
Yeah, actually, it was Palantir, the Silicon Valley Company.
Oh, they did?
The lunch, yeah.
Oh, okay. Thank you, I just, I didn't know for sure.
That's why there was so much of it.
But, I mean, that's why. But they were, I mean, everybody was just loving the food. You know, if you feed people, you know, they're happy, right? So, and then it was like cleanup time, and that really, boy, I was surprised that we cleaned up, because a lot of books were scattered around, trying to put them all back so that we could also give away the next batch. Now, we've got some books for Garden Village School, they're going to do the Fall Festival with Bromer property owners on the 23rd, Sunday, and so we'll have a table saying that these are free books for the kids that come down. And I put it in our newsletter, so again, they'll, they'll come down and get the books. If there happens to be anything left over, we'll take it over, it's the next school. Is it Empoli Brown? Or, someone told me those...
Stuff that's left over is sold for older kids.
No, I mean, no, I didn't take any older kid books.
Yeah.
I mean, the ones that we have for Garden Village. If any left over, just tell me what's the next school that would get it. But I have a feeling it'll all be gone. I have a feeling. So, other than that, let me see what this is. Made some notes here. Oh, I have a question. If I can ask a question while I'm giving my little report. The golf tournament, is that like a real golf tournament, or is that just something that you guys? I don't mean, I don't, I mean, is it...
Miniature golf for real golf.
I meant to say, is it something that the school put together, or is it?
It's a private organization.
The handoff.
There we go. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so now, now I gotta go, you mean? No. I don't play golf.
Sorry.
Okay, so anyway, that's great. Thank you. Just wanted to make sure. So I think I hit everything that I did, but just to say, it was a great day, everybody.
It really was.
I don't have much, other than just telling people to remember to vote. It's one of the most important elections of our lifetime, just get out there and vote.
And I will echo that, get out there and vote. You got kids away at college, make sure they sent for their absentee ballots. I checked with my son, he's got his, and he knows how to vote. Said I have the franchise, and I'm not afraid to use it. And I will reiterate about the book giveaway, of course, I have a soft spot in my heart for books. I love seeing kids' books. I heard the greatest thing from a couple of the teachers who were there Wednesday night, or Wednesday night, Friday night, and I managed to show up after work in time on Friday for them to be essentially done, so I could look around and look official, you know. Yeah, I would have been there earlier if I could have. But a couple of the teachers told me that there were, of course, a lot of children who were there with their parents who were sorting the books, and they saw the kids out there in the dark, huddled under the lights by the playground, reading these books. They were so excited to start reading them, and that's what it's all about. That was just like, it just did my heart good to hear that. So, and that was all I wanted to share on that. So with that, we'll go on to our superintendent's comments and correspondence.
Yeah, so I, too, wanted to thank AFT 3267 and the high school unit for sponsoring this in our district. It was wonderful to see all the volunteers there and the families. I had an opportunity to do some voter registration while I was there, and I, during that hour and a half, two hours that I was there, registered five voters, so hopefully they'll get out to vote. Hopefully, we got, we got more throughout the rest of the day, and about half of those folks, I didn't even have to approach them, they came right up to me and said, "Oh, I've been wanting to do this, and I'm glad you're here." So the other two, I had to ask like 100 people before I got someone to say yes, so. Because most of the people are registered, so, are not, not yet eligible. So also, for the schools getting the attendance honor roll awards, congratulations to them. These very same metrics that the schools received awards for are metrics that are in our LCAP and that we monitor district-wide, and it's helpful to know that we have schools, individual schools and schools across the district that are helping us move in the right direction on those measures. School attendance, I think, as Ms. Leah Inga Anawai has mentioned, is a partnership between the administrators of the site, the office staff, the classroom teachers, and the families. And so when all facets work together, we can make, we can start to move the needle on these measures and make sure that our students are there, because getting there is the first step in learning, so we're happy about that. Thank you to Ms. McCullic and her team for putting together an excellent Institute Day on Monday. Most of the folks that I've spoken to, I'll just say, all the folks I've spoken to about that day had very good things to say, and we look forward to continuing that kind of professional development for our staff. There are many presenters, most of them from our school district, that put in some time to offer their knowledge and expertise in different areas. And here's another little plug for books. You may have seen these stands throughout the district. You may have seen these stands throughout the district, um, throughout the city. We have one in front of our district office. It's a little library, it's a sharing library, uh, filled with children's books. Um, children can come by and, um, take a book and leave a book. Anybody can leave a book, um, if it's a good, if it's a children's book in good condition. Um, if it's too full, as I think it is now, I think, um, we, we have a box inside that, uh, we, we pull from. So, um, yeah, one day I came by and there was only one book left, so I filled it up with the, the, the supply we have. And then the next day, I think the child who borrowed those books came back the next day because he had read, or she had read them overnight and returned them. So now, so now it's very full because I, I replenished it and then they returned the books that they had borrowed. So it's good to know that, uh, children are coming by and borrowing and returning the books, so. No library card necessary at this library.
All right, then, section eight, general functions. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Great. So, item C, second amendment to the superintendent employment contract based on a satisfactory or better, and it was better than satisfactory. Superintendent performance evaluation for twenty fifteen sixteen. The board will consider a second amendment to the superintendent employment ingredient, agreement, which includes an extension of term to twenty third, to June thirtieth, twenty twenty. And modification of termination language to reflect recent legislative changes. I don't know if anybody has any questions or discussion on those changes to the contract. And the extension of the term is of course what our standard and the other is required by law. So if we can have a motion to approve?
Make a motion, we approve the second amendment to the superintendent's employment contract, uh, for two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen. And that it.
Actually, it's the con.
I know. I realize I want to sound. Uh, but it, it extends the term to June thirtieth, twenty twenty, and also reflects the modification of termination language reflecting recent legislative changes.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Yeah, not too hard. Okay, item D, local control accountability plan progress update. Ms. McCulick will share updates on the LCAP, including stakeholder input dates and metric results from the twenty fifteen sixteen school year. And then we will have the opportunity to affirm the district goals.
Yes, so tonight is really two purposes. One is to give you some updates, there's some new, um, information that has come. And then also to reaffirm our goals that we've had, um, for the past year, um, so that we can start making, um, steps towards the next iteration of the LCAP. We're in our fourth go-around of the LCAP. Um, and so what we want to do is just start with our district mission and, um, the LCAP should be based on this mission. And so we, we've been really highlighting our mission, um, this year so that we can really make sure that our LCAP is aligned to what our district mission is. And so, um, this summer, I created a little video. Unfortunately, the sound is not working, but it's cute little music, so you can just play some in your head while you watch it. But I want to show it to you real quick and then I'll get on to the next part.
Do we get to sing? Oh, no.
So these are students in our district. These are all, I stole them from Facebook, that, from our Jefferson Elementary School District Facebook. Um, and so it's just the language of the, um, mission over images. And it's so much better with sound, but.
Just sing happy.
Isn't this where we all have the music that makes us feel good?
Yeah. I'm gonna tighten that up a little bit. The images aren't as clear. I think it's just the way it was downloaded. telling your story to your community. And so having that video, um, want to get it on Facebook and on the, the website, once I get it better quality. But really to show that this is what we're about and all of our goals should connect to what our mission is. And so, um, the next few slides, you're gonna see them, these are ones you've seen before, but it's, I really want to just memorialize it for the public, people that access this, um, later. But, um, just to remind you, there are eight state priority areas, um, and that's gonna come into play when I talk a little bit more about what the state is doing to measure LCAP progress, um, with rubrics. But, um, so you can see those eight state priority areas, you've seen this slide before. You've also seen this one, how the local control, um, funding formula is funded, um, and then the LCAP, the Local Control Accountability Plan, is the plan that shows how you're spending the money. And then you've seen this slide before as well, it's the process. And so, um, right now, we're collecting the data. And so what I'm gonna show you tonight is some of the data. You've seen some of the data before in a different format, but, um, the rubric that's coming out through the state is going to be based on this data. So I want to just share it with you and the public so that, um, we're kind of in, ahead of this rubric that's coming out. Um, but you can just see the process, um, along the way, will be involving stakeholders looking at these metrics. This is the first time that they're shared publicly. They'll be shared at all the meetings throughout the year. And these are all the meetings throughout the year. You've seen a similar one, these are just updated dates for this school year. So this process will just continue, um, as before, some dates may change. There is a link on the front page of our website, um, it's a little bit further down, this is an old, um, image, but it's a link to an LCAP webpage that gives all sorts of information about the current, well, LCAP. It also has a link to the current draft, which is that hundred-page document, but then there's some highlights and things that are on that webpage. Um, and then this is the part that we're hoping to reaffirm tonight. These are the four goals that we had last year. Um, and you can see in bold, I have highlighted the, the short, um, terms that we've been using for, uh, all those four goals to help, um, folks stay engaged. And, um, but we want to make sure that this language is still what we want to consider. Um, it's pretty broad and that's intentional because it does, we want to encompass a lot of different things. Um, and so we'll give you a minute just to look that over. And then you have it in front of you as well. Um, and so you've seen this slide before, this is just taking, I bolted, all those bold words are now put into, um, you know, the shortened version, so when we do highlights and things, that people understand what that goal is really about, the essence of the goal. So now what's happening is the state is, um, you know, this is now going into our fourth year of writing the LCAP. And so they're determining, well, how do we measure LCAP growth and how do we determine success? Um, and in the past, it used to be that it would be determined based on just academic results and it was the Academic Performance Index or API. And so you'd get one score and it would rank all your, the schools. They don't want to do that anymore. I've told you before that they're gonna have multiple measures. So now they're creating this rubric. And we've been getting sneak peeks when I go to meetings at the county. It's not ready for distribution yet, but I do know it's based on, uh, many of the metrics that we've been using. So I want to show those results right now so that when it does come out, it's gonna look a different format. Um, they, they're playing around with what it's going to look like online, but at least we'll know what our results are when we see them. Um, so little information on the LCAP. The purpose really is to support districts in identifying our strengths and weaknesses and where we might need to improve. It's also for the state to determine which districts needs assistance. I'm thinking that's a little of that program improvement kind of idea again, but, you know, um, not sure what they're planning. And as I said, it's, um, they're gonna have a draft for the, you know, my counterparts all over the state to look at. We've seen little bits, so we'll see a draft in November. It's gonna be approved at the State Board of Education's meeting in November and then they're gonna release it publicly in January. Um, so we'll see, that's anticipated. Um, some of the major components of this rubric is going to be, it's just really top-level summary of the data, um, for districts and for schools. It's going to show performance on those eight state priority areas that I showed you earlier. Um, and then also an equity report. So the schools, um, with the student groups that have, there, there's gonna be out of five color coding. So blue would be top, red would be at the bottom, so out of five categories, performance categories, the area, student groups that are in the bottom two, um, they're going to, like, show that, illustrate that somehow. Um, they're going to have a standard report, some standard reports that you can see the relationship between the state, what the state requires and what your school district is using as an indicator for growth. Um, and then it's also going to have a way, I, I believe, that we'll be able to enter our local data so that when people go into this online resource, they'll see our results. Not sure how that'll look, though. And then they're going to have statements of what's model practices for those eight state priority areas, still not sure what that's going to look like. And then they'll have links to external resources.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
So when, when they present this, um, possible, you know, rubric to you and your colleagues, are you able to give input before they just accept it? Because you said they're gonna accept it.
So, yes. And so, um, we gave a lot of feedback. We had more questions than answers that were given to us. I gave a lot of feedback.
All right, that's good.
Yeah, and so hopefully in November, I have, I'm actually part of a professional learning network now with the county. They got some grant and so a lot of job, and so we're early implementers on this rubric and so I like to know what's happening. So we're gonna be able to hopefully give feedback too. But, yes, we definitely gave feedback. We gave lots of feedback. Um, and so, so far, the state has approved the indicators that you can see, so there's eight priority areas, a lot of it, they approved the English learner indicator, academic indicator. They're still working on what the CASP or the English Language Arts, the state testing, the math and English Language Arts performance standards will be. They have the results, they just don't know what's the cut points. Like this is, you know, your district is doing well. Um, so they haven't said that yet. So, or, you know, it's, it's a growth model, so what does that look like? We're still not sure. And then we also don't know how they're gonna evaluate this, us with the rubric. So, um, and then we also are going to have our local indicators, as you know, we have some, um, specific metrics to our district. So what I did is I took all of our goals and all of our metrics and I put them into a table. And so you can see, if you want to switch over, the, this is a screenshot, so I did the printed-out version for you, so cleaner copy. But, um, so what it is, is this is, for example, this is goal one and this is the very first metric in goal one. And you've seen all these results before, you just haven't seen it in this format. So what I did, these are the, all the CASP results. And so it starts off with all the student groups. And then there's twenty fourteen, fifteen baseline percentage proficient for ELA, English Language Arts. And then what our target was based on our metrics, so we said increase the percent of students proficient by ten percent. And so then that's our target. And then these are the results from twenty fifteen, sixteen, which you saw, but I color coded them. Green is they met, pink is it, we did not meet. And then some of our, um, later metrics were baseline, so I colored them yellow. So you can see for English Language Arts and then math. And then we're, we're also going to be displaying our MARS data, which is that math, um, performance tasks, but we don't have the results yet. We're still waiting for our partner, Silicon Valley Math Initiative. The, um, CASP website was down for about a month in September, October, and they weren't able to get the data in time to do their analysis. So you've seen all this before, but what you haven't seen is the next page, um, which is, this is still our first goal, improved student learning outcomes. But this, these are for our English learners. And so you can see, um, there were lots of different targets we had, um, so progressing and learning English. And this is all based on the California English Language Development Test. Um, and so we met our state targets, um, in all, but our math, um, for our reclassified English learners. And just to remind you, um, that, uh, oh, that actually does not. I was gonna say the newcomers, but they wouldn't be reclassified, so never mind. So we did, we were very, um, close, we did go up from, um, what our baseline was, but we still have some room to grow. And then if you move along to the next page, this is still goal one. We have lots of metrics in goal one. And this one's on technology. We did a baseline year, so next year you'll see, um, the columns divided where we'll see what our target is and what our growth is. Um, but we just had our baseline. And then we also included our physical fitness testing, so you can see our fifth graders met the goal, seventh grade was close. Um, and then also we had to put in, um, a metric about having, making sure we had enough textbooks, that every student, it's that Williams Act, every student has the textbook. And so we just have to certify and you approved that, or certified it at the last board meeting. So we met that target. On the next page, this is goal two, which is the professional learning for all staff. And so we have four metrics and so you can see, um, where we landed with the results. We did not have a great, um, response rate and so we're hoping that we have a better response rate, um, with this year's survey, um, and we hope that improves as well. And then we also listened to the feedback on our evaluations from all of our professional learning to make, um, to improve upon the next time. And so a lot of this is based on our institute days, um, as well as credentialing. The next page is still, um, oh, it didn't fix it. This is goal three. And this one is, um, the, what we saw earlier, the attendance, so the truant, manageable at-risk and chronic. So you can see our truant, um, reduced, so the lower the number, the better. Um, our manageable went up, but I'm wondering if the truant reduced and so they went into the manageable. Um, and then our chronic, um, reduced, but didn't get our target, so we were close. And then, um, the facilities inspection toolkit, that's just making sure that the school sites are safe, it's part of the Williams. Um, and so it's a required, uh, um, uh, check of all the school sites, facilities. We're still waiting for the suspension rate and expulsion rate. I want it to be accurate, so I didn't want to do my own calculation and make, have it wrong. Um, so we're waiting for those, we'll get those in November. And then, uh, we did not, uh, we're still working on the survey thing, so we want to, we're gonna hopefully have a better turnout of results. It's still new to folks, so we want to make sure that we, um, our data is really accurate. So this is still based on a small number of students. And then we had no dropouts, um, last year. And then on the last page, this is our community engagement, um, goal. And we revised some of these metrics last year, so that last one that's yellow, um, we, we adjusted how we're doing our family nights. So that's our baseline, is that every school will have at least one family night. But we don't have data yet because that's new. And then we want, um, we need a better turnout from our family survey. There was a little glitch in the way distribute, the surveys were distributed last year. So we have, they actually arrived at sites now and so hopefully we have everything. Um, and then we'll be getting those out. It was, uh, there was a, uh, miscommunication with that. So we'll be, hopefully have a better, um, turnout of participation, because as you can see, it really significantly dropped. But it was because of this, um, um, error with the surveys being distributed to sites, how it was distributed. It wasn't the sites, it was how it got to the sites. So, what we need to do, so that was just a heads up, it's coming. I'll let you know when the rubric's out. I'll be able to share it probably in January, but I wanted you and the public to know, um, how we're measuring ourselves and that, um, most likely the rubric will include this data, it just won't look the way I showed it to you. Um, so what I need tonight is, um, to get guidance from you on the goals. Um, and, you know, they've been working so far, so we hope that you agree and that you can reaffirm to provide us plans for next year, well, as we planned for the LCAP for twenty seventeen, eighteen. And then there's resources available for folks if they want to. Any questions?
Board members have questions?
Board members have questions?
We're getting this as we go along, so it's good that we see it all together again.
Yeah.
So as far as our goals, I think we're pretty much on track. Because we want to make sure we meet these.
They fit those eight state priority areas that we're measured on, yes.
If we get another, something else that we feel we want, and it doesn't fit here, we might lose some of them.
And it matches our mission, too.
Do you have any questions or discussion on those LCAP goals?
I, I like seeing it again, though. I mean, it just keeps showing, it's being enforced, and, you know, we know it's happening. So thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. I know it's, it's a, it's a lot of work, and I'm thankful for the time we got to spend and touch base on it, too. So I, I'm, I'm very appreciative of, of all that's been poured into this. But I think the goals look good, and they're keeping us on track to ensure that we're meeting the state goals. So, thank you for all your hard work.
If nobody has any other questions or anything, I believe we do need to actually take action, take a motion to approve those goals for, as our goals for the 2017-18.
Seventeen.
For the next year.
For next year, yeah, there we go.
So I would like to make a motion to, to approve the LCAP goals for 2017-18 LCAP development.
I'll second the motion.
Yay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Alright. Thank you, Ms. McIlroy.
What's this date?
That's today.
Are we looking for today?
Yes, it is the fourteenth today.
I thought it was the thirteenth when I got up.
Actually.
It is the twelve.
It's the twelfth today.
See, you guys are making me doubt myself. I know it's not, because you know, I'd be in big trouble. Because that's my daughter, my daughter's birthday. That's why I'm saying, no way, I wouldn't forget to say happy birthday to her. Scared me.
Okay, looks like we have a long ways down the agenda from there. Whoa. All the way to Section thirteen. Is that really true? Did I miss? That's it? Okay. To the Board Policies ARs, December 2015 Board Policy Revisions, Second Reading. And did end up with a couple of things.
Did you find one additional to the one that you mentioned earlier?
Yeah, I think so. I've got a note, go ahead and start with the one that I sent to you.
Sure. So there's Board Policy sixty-one forty-two point nine-two, and Page subsection C. There, the first two paragraphs on that page apply to high school districts. So, we.
I just ignore them now.
Yeah. Obviously, I mean, we could, we could have, we, we could have approved them, and obviously it doesn't apply to us. But anyway, we just thought we would make sure that that's eliminated, those first two paragraphs on, on that page. And then.
Because every time I bring it up, you guys say, oh, it's okay, we don't need it.
Yeah. We try to catch it. They're just, it's just, they just need to come up with two board policy books, because that would make life easier for everyone.
It would, yeah, wouldn't it?
Did you find the other?
Yeah, I did. Does anybody else, before I go there? Okay. So, in AR sixty-one forty-two point one C.
Say it again, sixty-one what?
Yeah, sixty-one forty-two point one C.
Oh, I have the page right there. Can you believe it?
And this is under the Sexual Health and HIV-AIDS Prevention Instruction. And on item eleven, where it says, "Teach the value of and prepare students to have and maintain committed relationships such as marriage." I would actually like to strike the words "such as marriage." I think that's unnecessary, and actually is potentially setting a, a preference for a certain type of relationship, that I don't think we want to go there.
Yeah.
I mean, I realize that the, the wording is that that would be an example, but when you pick a particular thing to use as an example, it has weight. So. I even ran that one past my son, who's on the.
Just management, I mean, yeah.
Yeah. This one.
Is there other discussion of the board on that? Is that an agreement?
Because this is such as marriage. Some people don't get married.
Right. And you can still have, yeah, I mean, and like I say, it's not specifically saying that's the only one, but I think there is, is a, a particular weight in selecting an example. And you don't need an example. A long-term committed relationship says it all, yeah. So, okay, everybody seems to be comfortable with that. That was the only other change I had.
Well, you know, I, I can see why they put it there, because what, you could have a friendship.
Well, you know what? I mean, that's not necessarily part of, well, actually, maybe it is part of sexual health and education, but those are part of the healthy relationships that you need too, so.
Still sitting in example of a preference.
Yeah. Yeah. So, nobody else has any changes? We could presumably accept this with those two corrections or adjustments. If somebody wants to make a motion.
I make a motion to approve the Board Policies and Administrative Regulations, with the exception of the two, six-one four-two point nine-two and six-one four-two point one C, the changes and amendments to those two.
Second the motion.
We have a second. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Great. Moving on towards record times again. Board member comments, reports, and reflection on board meeting guidelines.
Just, it's been mentioned several times tonight that we need to encourage everyone to get out and register to vote, and then also to get out and vote. I don't want Daily City and our district to be left behind. We have data that substantiates that we're making progress and that we're doing well. So we need people to go out and support the initiatives that support education. And as far as the guidelines, I focused on, we will keep our remarks brief and to the point, so that all opinions can be expressed. Because I feel like I spoke a lot at the last meeting. So I stepped back today, so that some people could step back. And, thanks.
So I chose we will bring our best selves to the meetings, being fully present and ready to contribute and be responsible. Many times, we don't have to say things. It's our actions. And I think it's important that, I know my sound kind of fluffy to some folks, but I think it's always, it goes a long way. It's always important to remember to be kind. A smile goes a long way. I frequent the 7-Eleven here on Eighty-seventh, and you always get a variety of homeless folks that, that are out front there. And it just makes me grateful. So giving whatever you can, and sometimes just a smile. They've even said, "Thank you for that." And it's just amazing how far that goes. So I'm thankful for everything that I have. I'm always sharing at every meeting. I am thankful to serve in this capacity. I say it every meeting because I mean it, and I'm thankful to be at this table. But I just want to encourage everyone to be kind. Any opportunity that you have to be of goodwill, that, that you do. So, have a great rest of the week.
I, I picked, we will work towards the future, learning from the past. Not too much of that stuff today.
No.
I just want to thank everybody for all the achievements that we have. And I, I just wish that more people out there would see that, and know, and hear about it. It used to be great years ago when we had at least three, and then there was four, local newspapers. I mean, maybe you, you probably lined a garbage can sometimes with that many papers. But it was an opportunity to always highlight something in the paper. And constantly, you'd see something. And also, even to talk about the issues and stuff. But we don't have that. So we should go out and, you know, talk about what we're experiencing, what's happening. They have different visions of what our schools are doing. Our schools are doing great. And it's, it's a shame that some people just think we're not, because they hear about something. Or they think all kids are not good, because one kid got in trouble. And we need to reach out. You talked about smiling. Yeah. Smiles are great, but it's also, we need to reach out to people, especially if you feel that they have, they're having some issues. You need to reach out to them, because they really need support. They need to know that people care about them. And it, I think we're doing that with a lot of our students now in schools, learning how to, what is that one thing? No one eats lunch alone? Yeah. And I think that's great, because there's nothing worse. It, it happened recently with the PTA, they had a dinner, a meeting, a dinner, everything. And one gal was sitting all by herself at a table. And here I was, having a great time with some other people. I said, "I'm going to go over there." Because this one mother was, just plopped herself on a table, thinking other people will come, and they didn't. And so I, I talked to her, and then finally someone else came over, and then somebody else. And it made all difference in the world if we do that. Now they'll want to come out again. Because if they go someplace, same with parents, if they go to a meeting and nobody reaches out to them, they're going to say, "Well, I'm not going to come back, because maybe no one likes me." So, smile, yes? And also, spend some time with some of the folks. I think we have a lot going for us here. And also, I'm going to put a little thing in here. We have an awful lot on our, on the ballot, you know. We got an awful lot of debates on TV that really are not very, not really nice. And it's a shame to watch that. It almost makes you feel like, what is going on? Is that the example that we set for our children? Hopefully, most kids are not watching it, but they may be. So we need to be sure that we always act the same way. It's okay to not agree with somebody, but it's not okay to put them down. And if we can always remember that, it's going, we'll, we'll have more friends. We'll understand other people, so. And then I find out that, when I talk to some folks, they have no clue what's on the ballot. You talked about that. We need to explain to them in real simple English exactly what it means, that what we, what we have learned, because we're sitting at advantage of getting more material. And let them know what it is that supports the schools, supports safety, supports anything that we feel is important here locally. If we look down the list of all the things, we're on the bottom, right? So we need to make sure everybody knows what they're looking for, without me telling you how to vote. But if you want to call me later, I'll tell you.
As I'm sure would any of us, if given the opportunity off the air.
Absolutely.
I picked, we will stay focused on our goals and avoid getting sidetracked. We'll keep our focus on the best interest of our students. We recognize a whole bunch of schools for excellence in attendance and truancy. We talked about the LCAP and how we're trying to plan long-term goals. So I felt that worked pretty well for that. And then I had another comment. So I think last weekend, we had the former superintendent of the Jefferson Union High School District, Tom Minchu, pass away. I actually have a personal story, because I actually went to Terranova as well, too. And he was actually my vice principal when I was a student there. So it's kind of personal, because I feel like, as a Terranova graduate, and as for him, as a Terranova teacher, a vice principal, principal, and for high school district, I think our community has kind of lost a great leader in education. So I just want to offer my condolences to him and his family, because I know that even though I didn't, I was never in trouble with him when he was vice principal, he was always like a friendly, warm, inviting person for the school. And then especially when I was trying to be on the school board here, I had this great story of him, just asking him for advice on how, what is a good school member? What should someone actually do when they set up here? And he spent time and energy talking to me, giving me advice on what it takes to be on the school board, and what kind of, just tips it takes, because it's not like the most obvious job, because most people don't really realize what people on school boards actually do. Most people in the public don't really even know what kind of documents we have to read, what kind of information we have to like consider. So I'm always grateful for his support and help with that. And it's sad seeing go, but just want to wish him, we're so grateful for him, and just want to wish his family all the best.
Thank you. I did focus on the, we will strive to support our district message of showing up. That was a big feature tonight, by attending meetings, arriving and starting on time and ending on time. And of course, I began the meeting four minutes late, for which I do apologize. I wasn't paying attention to the clock. We do want to adjourn our meeting with a moment of silence in memory of Mr. Minchu, of which I could hardly add to what you said, and I'm going to, but I will in just a moment. But also, Meyer Ernest, Ernie Bloom, one of the first members of the Personnel Commission from back in the early nineteen seventies, who has passed away. And then I will add a little bit on Mr. Minchu, just the formal part here, who was the district superintendent of the Jefferson Union High School District until last year, when he retired. Mr. Minchu was a graduate of Jefferson UHSD, and has since then has served in the district for more than twenty-two years. He began his career as a student teacher at Jefferson High School. Over his career, he served as a teacher, coach, athletic director, attendance supervisor, vice principal, and then as principal at Terranova for four years, and served as superintendent of Jefferson Union High School District from, from two thousand and eleven until his retirement in June twenty sixteen. And he was a, a real part of our community and a voice for education in our community, and will be sorely missed. If we could just have a moment of silence for these people.
Yeah, before you close the meeting, I would also just like to say that Mr. Minchu was very supportive of PTA, always. Made sure that he worked well with them, and also with the council. And, and that means a lot, you know, same with Mr. Vidalas, of course. But it's, he really did care. And about Ernest Bloom, not only was he on the Personnel Commission, and at the beginning, he, he and his wife never missed one until this last two years, when I guess he was getting sick. But he never missed a PTA T, ever. They thought that was really important to come back. And most of the young PTA members didn't know who it was.
Well, of course.
Naturally, you know, but, but he, they wanted to come. So I'm sorry that I missed hearing about that.
Right. Okay. And we will now take a recess and resume closed session in just a few minutes.